Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call tonight's open session of the January 6th School Board Meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Welcome, everybody. Ms. Chares, can you please call the roll?
Director Miles Miller.
Here.
Director Ana Basadu.
Present.
Director Laura Babbitt.
There.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Vice President Kadija Brown.
Present.
And President Ty Alton.
Present. And Ms. Chares, can you please make your announcements, too?
Of course. Este el siguiente mensaje sera repetido en español en unos momentos. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To request to participate in public comment, click on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the Raise Your Hand button. When called upon, you will be unmuted. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. Once again, to request, you will be unmuted, and once your time has elapsed, you will then be muted once again. And if you want to speak, you should raise your hand now. If you wait to raise your hand until the public comment period starts, you will not get to speak, and you will have to wait until the next public comment period. The board president will call on our students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write "student" at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. And on an individual basis, also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Brown holding a sign letting you know you have 15 seconds left. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you. Voy a proporcionarles un breve resumen detallando el orden de estar de unión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las 10, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y no lo pudieron hacer durante la primera llamada. Para comentar por videoconferencia, haga clic en el botón "Participantes" en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione el botón "Levantar la mano" o "Raise Your Hand". Al ser llamado o llamada, le van a permitir hablar por dos o tres minutos, dependiendo la dirección del presidente. Después del tiempo asignado, lo volverán a silenciar. Similarmente, para comentar por teléfono, se le pedirá que levante la mano presionando estrella nueve. El presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. Si hay estudiantes que desean participar esta noche, favor de indicar que son estudiantes al escribir "estudiante" al final de su nombre. El presidente otorgará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador, y también tiene la discreción de otorgar tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, verá a la vicepresidenta Kadija Brown levantando un papel indicando que le falta en 15 segundos. Favor de terminar su oración, pero trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chares. Now, we will approve the agenda. We need to pull item 11.1 from the consent calendar, and we will consider that at a future meeting. So are there any other changes anybody would like to request to the agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the pulling of item 11.1 from the consent calendar?
I move to approve the agenda with the pulling of the item from the consent calendar.
Thank you, Director Babbitt. Second by Director Sinai. Ms. Chares, can you please call the roll?
Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Vasudav.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, we have our agenda. Next, I will turn it over to Vice President Brown for the report from closed session. Vice President Brown.
Thank you, President Alper. This is the report from closed session. All school board members were in attendance. For item 3.1, the board heard an update and gave direction. For item 3.2.1, the board heard an update. And for item 3.2.2, the board heard an update and gave direction. Those are the notes from closed session.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. Now, we will have our first public comment period. So just a quick overview of the meeting before we do that. We're going to have 30 minutes of public comment, followed, public comment followed by union comments, followed by committee comments, and then board member and superintendent comments. We will then approve the consent calendar. We have one main item for discussion tonight, which is the update on the district's phased approach to school reopening, followed by what I think will be a very quick action item, which is a resolution related to an energy services contract. But the main conversation and presentation that we'll be having will be about the approach to school reopening. I did want to mention for people who are watching that our next board meeting on the 20th will likely have another presentation and discussion about that topic, but we'll also have an item about our current distance learning program and the successes we've been having, the challenges we've been facing with respect to distance learning, which is what all of our students are experiencing right now and all of our staff is experiencing right now. And so we wanted to make sure that we didn't get too far into the new semester without having a public discussion about that. But tonight, we'll be discussing the phased approach to school reopening. With that comment, I will turn it over to our public comment now. And as Ms. Chares said in the beginning, if you would like to speak, now is the time to raise your hand. Once we start, we're not going to add people to the list. And if you'd like to, if you do raise your hand, once we've started, you're welcome to speak in our second public comment period, which will be at the end of the meeting. I have six people with their hands up, and they will each have two minutes. And we're going to start with Jonas Lamaterie-Brownell for two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. I serve as BUSD's Herak Hospital teacher, working since 2012 with psychiatric hospitalized adolescents in grades 6 through 12 in multiple subjects. And currently, I also support students and their families in BUSD's Assisted Homeschool Program, supporting families to homeschool their first to fourth grade children. I love my job. I love seeking understanding and great understanding in my students. I love seeking my students walking their circuitous path of true happiness. I love discovering what my students say, which shows me what to ask them, which reveals to me more of their voice and vision. I love cherishing each one of my students' genius. I love seeing my students grow. Although only through a screen since March, I have witnessed my students during this pandemic, hospitalized and non-hospitalized alike, be brilliant, suffer, persist, grow, discover, enjoy, learn, and create beyond any imagining. I love my job, but I will never teach, and I will never speak, and I will speak up and act for no one to ever learn or teach in any needlessly dangerous situation. Daily new COVID transmissions in our state, county, and in Berkeley are far too high to justify any attempt soon or very likely before the end of this school year to engage in-person school contact. Thank you.
Thank you. Your sign kind of disappears there, Vice President. Okay. Stephanie Gutierrez will be next. Thank you, Mr. Lamaterie-Brownell. Stephanie Gutierrez will be next, followed by Sarah Bowles.
Hello.
Yep, we can hear you.
Yes. Hi, my name is Stephanie Gutierrez. I'm a fourth-year student at UC Berkeley, and I'm also an organizer with BAM by Any Means Necessary. And I'm here to say that I personally have had many loved ones who have died from the coronavirus and who are currently in critical condition. This is still growing. We, you know, there's new strains of this. And UC Berkeley, or sorry, and the Berkeley School District should be leading the way in how we should be responding to this. And these vaccines aren't safe for children yet. There's not the research behind it, and it doesn't make sense to just vaccinate teachers and send them back into classrooms with students who aren't vaccinated. And I plan on going into higher education. A lot of my family's in teaching in public education. And, you know, all of us agree that we're not going to go back into schools. And I encourage all the teachers to take the stand as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Bowles, followed by David Schroeder. Ms. Bowles.
Hi. So I just wanted to say, schools have been closed now for 289 days, and I'd love to get an update from the board on the impact of online school on vulnerable members of our community. Specifically, 24% of the kids in Berkeley rely on free lunch. And just doing some quick math, that's roughly 2,400 kids. And they've been cut off from consistent access to food, even with the ability to pick it up. So by my math, that's, using breakfast and lunch, we should be serving about 24,000 meals a week and nearly like 96,000 meals a month, or a million meals, including summer, since school's been closed. Expecting poor parents to cut out from work in the middle of the day or the end of the day, get on a bus, particularly if they're in an hourly job, carry a stack of lunches, it's kind of unreasonable and unsustainable. So I would love for the community to get an update on how many kids are actually able to access meals and how many are not. Because if kids aren't eating, it can cause significant long-term developmental harm. And overall, I think it would be great if we could get something like an equity tracker that keeps the community informed about whether or not we're really living our values and ensuring equal access and opportunity for all kids here. And moreover, I'd love to see an update on whether we've seen changes in enrollment data and absenteeism, particularly if there's disproportionate impacts, because we need to hold ourselves accountable about whether this is hurting kids who are already vulnerable and kids that we really need to support. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowles. And next, we have David Schroeder. And I just want to reiterate that on the 20th, we will be having a presentation and a discussion about distance learning and how it's affecting our students and some of that data, maybe we can have presented at that session. Mr. Schroeder.
Thank you. Dear board and staff, I miss my students in storytime. So, once upon a time, some economists and politicians sought money and popularity. A policy for safely reopening the state economy was issued in the midst of a pandemic. My school convened staff to rubber stamp a plan to reopen in full or in a hybrid model. Usually, administration can answer our questions, but this was not a plan originating in my school. So I share the faculty's questions with you. Why reopen now if there's not even access to restrooms without student-pod intermingling? Given all the constraints, would education be better on campus than via distance learning? Is this a progress fantasy to score political points and placate a handful of reopening advocates? Which families of students, staff members, and community neighbors are we willing to endanger by pushing for reopening instead of investing our limited resources into supporting vulnerable families and planning for vaccinations? Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we have two more commenters. Melissa Corgan is next.
Gavin Newsom's proposal to offer the district's $450 to reopen is a bribe to kill an innocent child and put families and community members at risk. We don't know whose child it will be. Could be one of those that we consider to be a vulnerable population. Could be one of yours. It is also planned to put together by big business to force parents back to work and throw a bone that districts have been fighting for, for funding, and add much-needed resources to inadequately funded schools, as they have been since I remember proposition cutting out actual programs that helped kids like summer school and enrichment for all, that Berkeley has to raise extra money for through extra taxes. Rather than accept the government's blood money, we should be demanding leadership and governance from the national and state level to provide real support for students and families in this crisis. We've been asking for smaller class sizes for years because we know they work, in in-person learning or online. We've been asking for opportunities to give individualized instruction to students who are the most vulnerable. In individualized instruction, you can do that just as well online as you can in person, for many of our students. But online mentors for both parents and children? Oh, that would be a really high level of ask. I don't think so. I think that even asking for internet as a quality, high-fast, speed, high-level opportunity for parents to be able to access the learning that their children need is not a crazy thought. We're asking for too little. We're not thinking creatively. These are just the tip of the iceberg for the things that we should be demanding for our students. Instead, teachers like myself and the preceding speakers are forced to continue to be the conscience of the district and remind members of this board the dangers of reopening prematurely. Those who believe that our government institutions are handling the challenges of the pandemic well or doing okay need to look at the events in Washington today and reevaluate the responses and responsibilities for keeping our children, students, and communities safe.
Thank you, Ms. Corgan. Next, our final public speaker is Pedro Terrero. I'm going to turn it over to Director Vasudav to explain the process.
Hola, señor Terrero. Muchas gracias por venir a dar su comentario esta noche. Le vamos a dar un poco más de tiempo para que pueda dar su comentario, y le quería explicar que la señora Chares va a ser la traducción mientras usted esté hablando. Si, por favor, puede pausar, decir una oración, pausar para que ella pueda hacer la traducción. Se lo agradecemos, y muchas gracias por acompañarnos esta noche.
I think he's muted.
¿Lo escuchan?
Sí, lo escucho.
Hola, buenas noches. Feliz año a todos.
Good evening, all.
Feliz año, feliz año para todos. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de hacer un comentario público.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Mi comentario es acerca, yo soy un padre, tengo tres hijos, dos en Silvia Méndez y uno en Longfellow.
Speaking as a parent, I have two students at Silvia Méndez and one at Longfellow.
Solo quiero comentarles, yo estoy muy a gusto con todo el soporte que me han dado ahora en Berkeley para el estudio a distancia. Ha sido muy bueno todo el soporte que nos han dado, el apoyo.
I want to say that I'm very pleased with the support my family has received during distance learning.
Quiero aparte agregar que Silvia Méndez ha sido una muy buena escuela para mí, para mis niños. Ahora, que está en Longfellow, él estuvo en Silvia Méndez, él fue graduado de Longfellow.
I'd like to add that Silvia Méndez has been a great community for me and my family.
Estoy muy contento con la escuela. Yo solo estoy tratando de hacerle saber que yo tengo muy buena experiencia con la escuela. Me ayudó mucho con mis niños, y quisiera que continuaran dando el apoyo sobre el programa de inversión dual, ya que es la única primaria que lo tienen en Berkeley.
I just want to say that I've had such a great experience, and I just want to, I hope that this support continues.
Quiero que sigan apoyando el programa de inversión, porque es buena oportunidad para los niños poder hablar dos lenguas, tal vez más de dos lenguas, pero entre más lenguas pueden hablar es mejor. Entonces, Silvia Méndez es la única escuela en todo Berkeley que la tiene. Entonces, quiero que sigan apoyando ese programa.
Please continue to support the dual immersion program that Silvia Méndez has benefited my family greatly.
Que no se hagan más recortes, que sigan antes que puedan apoyar un poco más a la escuela y para que puedan seguir apoyando a los niños, para que puedan seguir progresando, principalmente los que son aprendices de inglés que ocupan más ayuda.
Do your best to minimize the cuts and the negative impact to the families and continue to support students like you have.
Es solamente una escuela, entonces eso es lo que yo pido. Aparte, tenemos que ver el master plan, porque el master plan, tenemos un master plan muy antiguo, que hace mucho tiempo que no se ha reactualizado. Entonces, queremos que lo revisen y podemos dar una actualización.
It's time to also look at the master EOP plan and begin to update it.
Todos ahora hasta los teléfonos se tienen que actualizar cada cierto tiempo, y tenemos un programa que tiene años que no se ha actualizado. Entonces, creo que no sé qué está pasando. Creo que necesitamos una actualización.
It's been years since it's been updated, and it's crucial that it is revisited and updated.
Y estoy con respecto a reabrir las escuelas, yo estoy de acuerdo que se abran cuando sea seguro para todos, para los niños, para los maestros, y para los padres y para todas las familias, que se abran cuando sea seguro para todo mundo.
With respect to school reopening, it needs to happen once. It's safe for everyone, students, teachers, and families alike.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias, señor Terrero. Gracias.
All right. That concludes the open public comment period. If you have raised your hand during that public comment period and didn't get a chance to speak, we'll have another public comment period at the end of the meeting. Now is an opportunity to hear from our unions. I know we have a recorded comment from the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Are there any other, if there's any other representatives of any other unions? Now is the time to raise your hand. I don't see any. Ms. Chares, do we have Mr. Myers?
We do. I'll be sharing my screen.
Okay, so this is, we're going to have a five-minute comment from Matt Meyer, who's the president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers.
Good evening, school board directors and Superintendent Stevens. I'd like to start by thanking the many people who sent congratulations on the birth of our second child, Larka. The arrival of a new baby is a wonderful gift at any time, but especially now when so many other things are so dark. Hearing from well-wishers lifted our family's spirits. I'd also like to thank BFT Vice President Janine Waddell for her tremendous work on behalf of BFT while I was on leave. She represented our members, negotiated with the district, and engaged with the community during a very challenging time. It's very difficult to focus on returning to in-person instruction when California is setting grim records with each passing day. Headlines and ongoing restrictions on daily life have had a huge influence on how our members think about working in close quarters with many students. We've been told not to gather with anyone outside our households, but teachers are asked to prepare to host students from a dozen different families. We're told to assume that anyone can transmit the virus due to the prevalence of asymptomatic transmission, but then are asked to accept that the advice doesn't apply to students. We learned that a new, more easily transmitted variant of the COVID virus is spreading, but teachers are asked to move forward without knowing how it affects children or their ability to infect others. Restaurants are closed indoors and outdoors because eating without masks is risky, but BUSD proposed that teachers supervise maskless children while they eat lunch. We've been asked to put all these concerns aside and work quickly toward reopening. We are doing our best because we hope and believe that there will come a time when it is safe to reopen schools. But it is crucial that everyone acknowledge that the very real science-based concerns that our members have. As of right now, the district has not followed contractual agreements made in October. There needs to be improvements in how and when staff are tested. Even this week, teachers are not getting timely results. On numerous occasions, the district has not informed the union of positive COVID cases at sites as specified in our agreements. There is a steep learning curve, and mistakes can have grave consequences. We are worried that the district can't follow through on future agreements as we increase the number of adults and students on campus. BFT's negotiating position was developed with our community's safety and educators' valid concerns as a high priority. Tonight, I'd like to review some of the key elements of BFT's proposal and explain the rationale behind them. As Janine said in her December 17th union comments, the centerpiece of BFT's proposal is that return to in-person work should be voluntary. Just as families have varying concerns about how and when to return, so do educators. Just like the rest of the community, teachers have their own health issues where they live or care with people at high risk, and they have unmet child care needs and other barriers to in-person work. BFT has been receiving an increasing number of inquiries from teachers researching options for leave absence. Forcing teachers to return will result in many leave requests and huge staffing problems. It will have a severely negative impact on many students as these teachers will be absent from the distance learning portion of the day, and the momentum of learning will be lost. There are teachers who will be willing to return when conditions substantially improve. Let's support them, learn from their successes and challenges, and build on what we learned. If it is safe and workable, other colleagues will join them. Another key element to the BFT proposal is that there be a robust and easily accessible COVID testing program for students. In addition to the program that is underway for staff, children are often asymptomatic, so we can't know if they carry the virus without tests. It's simply not possible to say that students don't get or transmit the virus at schools without widespread testing of children that has not yet been done. Testing is the only way to identify and curb potential outbreaks. Discovery of a more easily transmissible variant and the possibility that this variant is more easily transmitted by children makes frequent student testing even more essential. It is predicted that this will be the dominant strain of COVID in a couple of months.
What happened there, Ms. Chares? Did we launch her altogether? Did we lose her? Well.
Excuse me, why? Yes.
Well, she'll come back, and we can hear the end of Mr. Myers' comment. So let me go to committee comments. I don't see any committee members raising their hands. So let's go to board member comments, and we can always come back. I assume Ms. Chares will come back to us. Who wants to go first with board member comments? I can just call on people. Ms. Director Babbitt.
I just want to wish everyone a happy new year. I hope you all had a joyous celebration and still remain optimistic as we move into 2021. I wanted to thank Ms. Bowles for her comments around really making sure that we consider the equity lens of our remote learning and our future plans. As I was looking at our Assistant Superintendent Samantha Tobias Espinosa's background, it just reminded me of emerging stronger together. And I'm really hoping that we will move towards that work of how we're going to emerge stronger and how we're going to move our district to reach our equity goals, to really develop that vision for our plans, for a robust summer school plan, how we're going to actually engage our students in the mental health services that are needed, and then how we're going to do more than just talk about equity, but really deliver and really deliver on our equitable strategies so that we can provide equitable results for our students. So thank you for this time, and I look forward into the work that we're going to do this year.
Thank you, Director Babbitt. Ms. Chares, his internet went out, but she's back, so why don't we go back? Ms. Chares, can you play the last two minutes of Mr. Myers' comment, and then we'll go back to the rest of the board comments?
Yes, sharing my screen now.
Okay.
Now, when community transmission is high, which is defined as over 5% in the Washington State data they analyze, school reopenings contribute to community spread, but at lower rates, they do not. The report was published in December 2020. This would normally be considered very current, but in COVID times, a few weeks can make a lot of difference. In this case, the more easily transmissible COVID variant was not part of this data, which makes it even more imperative that we ensure a low-rated transmission before we resume in-person school. Any type amount of in-person learning necessarily reduces the amount of time teachers will be able to devote to distance learning. There is simply no possible way to add hours of in-person instruction without trade-offs. One of the major risks of shifting so much of our focus and resources to a hybrid reopening that benefits some students is that we will dismantle the distance learning structure that other students rely on. The district's own recent elementary hybrid survey shows that a majority of families are not ready to return to school sites. How will we maintain the remote learning that they will continue to depend on? Balancing these needs is the work we are engaged in during our negotiations, but there are no easy answers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Meyer. And we'll go back to the board now. Director Vasudav, do you want to?
Yes, sure. Thank you, President Alper. I also wanted to thank everyone who came out to give public comment today. I know that, you know, we're really hopeful that we are going to come together with our labor partners and move forward during this really challenging time. I think a lot of Mr. Myers' comments resonated with me. There's just a lot that we don't know and a lot of new information that's coming out. And I know that we're all, we're And I know that we're all working as hard as we can and our district staff is working as hard as they can to keep up with new announcements from the governor's office, you know, new announcements from our public health officials, so, and I know that they've been working through the holidays. So thank you very much to our district staff for, for working so hard. I also wanted to talk to a little bit just about the master plan and I was really pleased that Mr. Pedro was here to give his public comment today in Spanish and to say that, you know, that it is, it is my hope and I know that our superintendents as well, that this year we will update our English language master plan, that there will be a robust public engagement process for that and that, you know, our, our T W I families will be at the heart of that. So I just wanted to, to make sure that Mr. Pedro heard that and I'll say it in Spanish really quickly, President Alper, if that's okay. Para, para el señor Pedro le quería agradecer por estar aquí con nosotros esta noche y le quería decir que nosotros vamos a trabajar en el plan maestro para aprendices de inglés, que eso es una prioridad para nuestro distrito y que las familias en Silver Mendez y en Nocado, que son parte de este programa, van a ser parte de ese proceso. Entonces muchas gracias por venir esta noche a dar esos comentarios. Es un momento muy difícil para nuestra comunidad, pero yo sé que, que todos estamos trabajando muy duro para que nuestras escuelas puedan salir adelante, para que nuestros estudiantes bilingues también puedan salir adelante ahorita durante estos momentos difíciles. Así que muchas gracias por acompañarnos esta noche.
Thank you. Director Sina or Director Miller?
Sure, I just want to start by, for, with some student advocacy issues I've heard recently. We understand right now COVID rates are not, not, are, sorry, I just want to say something to my thoughts, that they are not, we are not doing COVID-wise and we understand that. And students just want to advocate for in the future when things do get better for more mental health opportunities, whether they're online or in small groups in person or certain end of the year events that could possibly happen if in the next month's rates do go down. We think it's really important, a lot of, a big part of mental health isn't just teaching us about mental health. It's actually about doing things to increase, to improve our mental health and teaching us how we can be self-sustaining with that. So students are looking for a lot more reasons for that, specifically graduations that could happen at the end of this year, if possible, or other events such as sports. And I'm sorry, that was a little bit messy, but mainline, students are looking for more mental health opportunities going towards, in the semester and the end of the next year. And a lot of students want to give appreciation to the staff members at the Berkeley High College and Career Center for translating all their services online this year. We understand it was difficult, but we thank you guys so much for all your work and helping us through this very difficult time.
Thank you, Director Miller. Director Sina?
Yeah, I wanted to just take a couple of minutes to, wanted to say happy new year to everybody. You know, I was optimistic going into the new year, but today was a very sad day for democracy. And I think it weighs heavily on a lot of us. And I know that the Senate went back into session this evening after having been occupied and taken over by a group of rioters. But, you know, the positives, you know, message I just want to say is it really makes me feel I'm so fortunate to be able to work with a team like the Berkeley School Board, the Berkeley community, that while we don't agree on everything all the time, or maybe even a lot of the time, people are civil and respectful and really are engaged in our civic democracy here in our community. And I really want to appreciate everybody for that. I want to appreciate not, you know, the folks who come for public comment, but also those of you who get on, you know, the Zoom just to listen and to then go back afterwards and listen and to share with your colleagues and your friends. And so we, we have a really special community. We often think of it as our little Berkeley bubble, but I'm really appreciative of our Berkeley bubble right now and I just really wanted to extend that appreciation. And in that spirit as well, I want to announce on January eighteenth, at nine A M. we will be hosting our tenth annual Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Breakfast. And this year's theme is Black Lives Matter. We will have a wonderful keynote speaker, Regina Mason, who is a Berkeley High graduate and a fifth-generation descendant of a former slave who wrote the first published book about his experience as a slave. So you can, I'm hoping, Dr. Stevens, that we can get the announcement on our website and through our Twitter feed and through Facebook and all the ways that we communicate information so that people can get the link and sign on. It's virtual. And it starts at nine A M. on January eighteenth. We'll go for an hour and will be a wonderful experience, so I invite you all to participate. One of our former, former recognized leaders was a previous honoree at the keynote, M L K Breakfast, a few years ago. And that was Director, Vice President Khadija Brown. And a lot of people have been involved with it over the years. And then lastly, I'm also very excited about the rollout of the vaccine, the COVID-19 vaccine. Alameda County has begun vaccinating healthcare workers. And hopefully in the coming weeks, we'll start to be able to vaccinate our next line of essential workers, including school employees, grocery workers, other essential, essential folks. And so I'm feeling very optimistic about the vaccine. It's still going to take a while and people still have to wear masks. They still have to remain socially distanced. They still have to wash their hands. But there, there is light at the end of the tunnel, so that's, that's exciting. And look forward to the next stages in this, in this phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sina. Vice President Brown?
Thank you, President Alper. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all so much for coming to our board meeting. There's so much going on in the world right now and you could have used your time to be somewhere else. But thank you for, for being here and for being, being present to hear about our plans for our young people. I'd like to thank Director Sina for her plug for the M L K Breakfast, or it's not breakfast this year, but the M L K celebration. I, I registered yesterday, so I'm excited to be there and excited to celebrate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, but also uplift Black Lives, not just here in Berkeley, but, but around the country and around the world. I had a long speech prepared about today and the events that took place at the U S Capitol. But I've decided to actually forego and not say those, those, use those notes today because I don't want to give too much time to something that is, is absolutely ridiculous in my opinion. So I'll stop right here and just say that today has been a heavy day for a lot of us. So remember that, especially in your engagement with students over these next couple of days. I would also like to thank the public comment that was made earlier in regards to equity and am really excited that we are going to hear a presentation at our next meeting about distance learning, the effects that it's having on our most vulnerable students. But specifically, I want to hear how distance learning is affecting our McKinley, Vinton, and homeless and foster students. And so I look forward to that presentation next meeting and am excited about what is on the agenda for this meeting. So thank you, President Alper.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? I don't think I missed anybody. Okay, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Stevens.
Thanks very much, President Alper. Good evening, everybody, and happy new year to all of you. Welcome back and thanks for attending this evening's meeting. I thought what I would do is offer just like President Alper, a quick preview of some of the topics we plan to discuss at our coming meeting, just so that members of the public are aware of the variety of topics that we plan to, to, to share. We're planning a presentation about workforce housing. Offer the community an update on that particular topic, one that is important to us. As well, we'll offer an update on the Longfellow Modernization Project, how we're going about engaging the community in that particular work. We plan as well to offer the community an update about the middle school student assignment process. So please tune in if that's a topic that interests you. And then you've heard as well that we'll be preparing a presentation about distance learning. By the time we get to our board meeting two weeks from now, we also anticipate that we will be fully into our budget building season. That's usually kicked off each year by the announcement on January fifteenth from the governor about his anticipated budget for public schools for the coming school year. So it's at that point that we'll have some preliminary sense of the budget prospects for public schools here in California. And that launches a full season of engagement through a variety of committees and town halls to begin to pull together the budget. This is a special budget building year in that the district will be rebuilding the three-year L cap plan. The L cap plan, which stands for the local, oh my goodness, there's now two L caps. I've forgotten the original acronym. Oh no.
Local Control and Accountability Plan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your help. It's been substituted in my mind with the second acronym. This particular plan is the, the plan that all districts in California use to sculpt the set of funds that are intended to support students who receive supplemental funding. They include E L students, students, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch and students who are homeless and foster children. So as we begin to announce our budget prospects, please know that this is the launch to a formal plan writing season as well that will take particular account of these equity goals. I also want to offer my thanks this, this particular time, much like my colleagues, to our educators who are coming back from their winter breaks and facing an unprecedented incentive circumstances around our country. Over the course of the last two days, I know that our educators are offering particular support to students in terms of facilitated discussions, as well as a whole variety of emotional supports as we've been reacting to the news coming out of Wisconsin about the failure to prosecute what was a travesty of justice in the Jacob Lake case. And then today, what we're finding very frightening and violent rioting taking place in our nation's capital. So to all of our educators and staff who support our young people to make sense of these current events, I just want to offer you personal thanks. And then finally, one word of welcome. We're very glad in the middle of this month to be welcoming Mr. Max Isler, who will be joining the Berkeley Unified Team as our new Director of Technology. In my last comments, in December, I congratulated Jane Nichkey on his coming retirement and we want to welcome Max Isler, his replacement, to the B U S D family. We're very glad to have you coming on board. And with that, President Alper, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens. Now we'll be moving to our consent calendar. I have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the, reminding everybody that we've removed item eleven point one from that calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar with the necessary corrections.
All right. Motion by Vice President Brown is their second.
My seconded.
Seconded by Director Rossidov. Ms. Tyra, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Sina?
Yes.
Director Bab?
Yes.
Director Rossidov?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
And President Alper?
Yes, okay. Thank you. Now we will move to item twelve point one, which is our discussion, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Stevens.
Great, thanks very much. I'll take a moment just to share my screen. So I offer this presentation this evening, knowing that for the last two weeks, majority of our staff was away on winter break. There are not a lot of significant updates since the meeting on December sixteenth, when we provided a variety of updates to the board. There were though, a few sort of notable sort of occurrences in the world of school reopening and COVID-19. And so I'll just focus in on those particular updates, both for the benefit of the public and for the Board of Education. Since this evening's meeting, I'd like to touch on the local health conditions. These were referenced both in comments by public speakers as well as by board members. So we'll take a look at the data as of today, related both to the stay-at-home order. This is connected directly to local ICU capacity, as well as our current status in the state's COVID-19 tiering system. This relates directly to case, the case rate and test positivity. We'll also just touch on some of the details about the governor's January first press release about school reopening. This is a plan that he's calling Safe Schools for All. So we'll share some of the key details that the governor announced in that press release, some of which have yet to be specified. And then we'll take a look at, in a bit more detail, about the current state of discussions between our labor partners in the district about a hybrid learning model at the point that we regain permission from local health officers to reopen our schools. I always, before beginning our sort of standard updates to the Board of Education, touch on the values that we've tried to hew to over the course of this long pandemic. We've been motivated time and time again to protect the health and well-being of our students, families, and staff members, as well as to safeguard the social and emotional well-being of everybody in our school community, to provide an equitable set of opportunities under these difficult circumstances so that all of our students are able to succeed, to provide ongoing quality education, which is the, the well-deserved reputation of the Berkeley Unified School Districts. And then as we face a number of important decisions through the pandemic, to stay in constant communication with our families and staff. And that continues to be our commitment. For folks who are tuning in right now and want to learn more about the district's safety plans or to get information about our readiness, we encourage you to check out our website. There you'll find very detailed reopening plans related to the pre-K, elementary, middle, and high school level. You'll also see readiness dashboards that indicate the variety of lines of work that the district has been preparing so that we can be in a position to open at the point that we regain permission. You'll also see something that we're calling the COVID-19 onsite case dashboard. This will give you a very detailed and constantly updated view on the number of COVID-19-related cases on our campuses. We have not had any cases where we believe transmission to have occurred on our school settings, but nonetheless, we have had members of our staff come to school, test positive. They've reported those positive cases and members of the public can see a detailed view of those case reports at each of our schools or work locations over the course of the full pandemic. If we turn our attention to the most recent data, we're paying attention collectively as a community to the rate of hospitalizations and the availability of ICU beds in our region. Most folks following along with the news recognized that the stay-at-home order issued in December and that extends, in fact, through the, through the early portion of this month, was connected to the availability of ICU beds on a regional basis. While I won't unpack each of these charts this evening, you can very clearly see over on the right-hand side of each of these charts the very dramatic rise in hospitalizations and the use of ICU beds for COVID-19 victims since about late November through the month of December. If we turn our attention over to the, some of the metrics that we're more familiar with, these are the metrics that are tied directly to the state's tiering system. We can see that there are dramatic differences, particularly in the number of cases per 100,000 residents of our county. You can see here in this portion of the slide, the state's tiering system, purple, red, orange, and yellow, the number of cases per 100,000 that corresponds with each of those tiers, the overall test positivity rate that corresponds with those tiers. And if we move over to what is circled in the purple, this is the current January sixth adjusted case rate per 100,000 for Alameda County. We're at thirty-one point six cases per 100,000 residents. And you can see the current as of today test positivity rate. So if we map back over to the, these metrics, you can see that very clearly we are well above the threshold for the red level when, when taking cases into account and that we're sitting just above the, or sorry, we're sitting in the red level as it relates to test positivity. A special caveat here that I'll mention, if folks read some of the fine print in the governor's proposal, you may have noticed what appears to be a readjustment in the total case rate per 100,000. I'm not going to offer a lot of comments this evening on that readjustment because we haven't yet received a lot of written confirmation from the state if that is in fact true. And so for the remainder of the presentation, I'm going to assume that it's the current state tiering system that we would be used eventually to reestablish permission to reopen our schools. So if we think about what we know already about the timeline related to these metrics and the permission to reopen our schools, I've shared this slide in a number of previous presentations. It's essentially meant to represent the, the sort of four to five-week gap between the approval of these two metrics, case rates and test positivity, and the eventual permission to reopen. So that four or five-week delay is represented by this pink portion. permission to reopen. So that four or five week delay is represented by this pink portion. And if we were very optimistically to see that case trends or case transmission were to get into the red level, let's say by next Monday, January 11th, we might anticipate that five weeks later, around February 16th, we might regain a permission to reopen. I think most observers right now are not optimistic that those transmission rates will get back down to about seven per 100,000 by next Monday. And in fact, we're seeing a reverse trend. We're seeing that those transmission rates continue to increase even from Monday to Wednesday of this week. So this is a very optimistic projection that we might potentially open around mid-February. If I were to offer my best guess, again, I'm a layman, and I don't have any particular knowledge about when how the trends will go. I don't imagine actually that a February 16th reopening date is realistic. Imagine we have several more weeks of increased transmission before we start to see any positive bend in that trend data. I'll touch just a little bit on some of the key details from Governor Newsom's Safe Schools for All plan. This was announced over winter break. It outlines sort of four elements of a potential plan, some of which are still pending the approval of the of the legislation, legislature. First, the governor is proposing to repurpose $2 billion in school-related funding to essentially create a set of financial incentives or financial supports for schools that agree to reopen, and that agree to implement a set of safety measures that include testing, ventilation, and PPE. Many of the sort of safety protocols are already included in work that we've been working hard to complete over the course of many months. But this sort of financing, this additional financing is one aspect of the governor's plan. And he, in his press release, mentioned that this would be the equivalent of about $450 per student that would thereby that would then increase for students in certain categories. He's also then making some additional specifications about safety and mitigation measures that include testing. In this particular, in this particular press release, he's mentioning weekly testing for both students and staff, mask use, which we've been talking about for quite some time, coordination between school and health officials for contact tracing, which we've also been working on for a while, and the promise of prioritized vaccinations for school staff, something we don't know a lot about. To move on through additional elements of the governor's proposal, he's also signaling the creation of an oversight and assistance team at the state level that would offer technical assistance to schools. It's being led by Dr. Naomi Bardock from UCSF, with whom we've had some contact over the course of the last several months. And it includes a composition of a variety of agencies from around the state. We don't know quite yet what this is going to look like in terms of actual contact between BUSD and the state technical assistance team, but this is in any case, the third aspect of the plan introduced by the governor. And then finally, he's committing to a set of transparency and accountability metrics for families and staff that include things like the dashboards that we have now made available here in Berkeley, but made available across the state. Also included in this particular item of the governor's plan is a hotline meant to support school staff and parents to report concerns as schools begin to reopen. So I say all of these things sort of in the broad strokes, because this is right now the level of information available to us, and we'll be working through our liaisons in the county office of education to understand in more detail exactly how these elements will play out. I was able to attend an informational webinar put on by the state's Valencia Branch Lab. This was mentioned explicitly in the governor's plan. And so right now, we did learn that that lab does not have the capacity to test students yet. They are working to introduce that capacity potentially by the month of February, and are right now just standing up enough capacity to be able to offer staff testing for school districts. And of course, right now in Berkeley, we're offering staff testing through a separate contract with a company called Curative. So we'll pay attention to the development of the state's testing capacity through the Valencia Branch Lab. I won't review the ready opening reopening readiness dashboard in lots of detail, but this is always available to families. It's updated each Monday. And you can see that there are many items in this particular dashboard that are now signaled as ready. There are some items, though, on which we continue to work. This includes, really importantly, the design of a hybrid learning schedule with our labor partners, and that is currently listed as ongoing. It also includes the sort of ongoing search for substitute staffing for accommodated employees. These are employees who would be working home because of some underlying health conditions. And then it's also notable that down at the bottom of this particular screen, to be updated next week, we have now submitted our school reopening plan to the Alameda County of Office of Education. That was completed by staff over the winter break and was submitted to the county office just yesterday. And then finally, to talk a bit about the details of hybrid learning, as Mr. Meyer, the president of BFT signaled, there are some differences right now in the approaches of the district and the teachers' union as it relates to hybrid learning. And so I can unpack a little bit more of those differences. What I would say probably most significant about our current conversations is that there appears to be a high level of agreement between the two parties about our initial proposal for what hybrid learning model would look like. And just as a reminder, what we've introduced is a distance learning in the morning, hybrid learning in the afternoon model, which we're seeing across many districts in the state as one way to balance the full set of needs in the community through this next phase of the pandemic. We believe that part of the sort of basic agreement on this schedule has to do with the balance that this model strikes for teachers between their sort of various sort of competing needs to be able to offer support in a remote environment and in person environment, as well as its sort of ability to balance the needs we're hearing expressed from a whole variety of families here in Berkeley. We think as well that the strength of this model is that it maintains a stable core of distance learning in the morning, which we understand for some families is less than desirable. And then it adds to that core of distance learning and in-person learning experience, both in the afternoon and in the after-school program. So to talk a little bit about some of the key differences right now, having highlighted the similarity in our thinking about the basic model for hybrid learning, there are differences in a couple categories, and these are significant and will require time over the course of January to resolve. They include a difference of perspective on using volunteers versus having all of our staff return in this next phase of our school reopening, what we're calling Phase Two. There are some differences right now in COVID testing for students. BFT is asking that this be mandatory for all students. And because it's not required by the state at this point, we have been wanting to design a testing program and in factor, closing in on a final contract with a test provider to do student testing, but don't want to see that school reopening is made contingent upon the availability of this testing. We're also still working with our council to determine whether or not we would have the legal grounds to exclude a student whose family refuses to participate in COVID testing. So there's a number of complications there, but we don't want to see this as a precondition, although we do think it's very important. There's also differences right now in the definition of a reopening threshold. BFT has proposed that this would be in the orange tier, if the teaching is in fact, if in-person teaching is voluntary. And right now, we are sticking to the guidance as it's been given by local health officials and by the state, that elementary reopening should take place at the point that we achieve the metrics associated with the red tier. A number of other differences include a school and classroom closure threshold. BFT has asked that that be a mandatory threshold, that if 5% of any classroom or school test positive, that that classroom or school would go into a quarantine period. We believe that that's a sound set of guidelines, but ultimately think that we should work on a case by case basis with our local health officials to make those particular quarantine decisions, as opposed to having a hard and fast rule. And there's also some differences about our desires for work at home accommodations. BFT has proposed that all staff who present documentation of a high risk, or who live at somebody or live with somebody with high risk should be accommodated. And we are sort of proposing to stick with the current process, which has been defined both by the Americans with Disabilities Act and by the Centers for Disease Control, their description of high risk conditions. We're also talking about about the supervision in the morning of the student screening. This is the sort of app-based self-attestation process. And so we'll work through differences about how we might staff that particular component of the in-person return. And then finally, there's some differences of viewpoint about how long we should take to phase in a reopening. And that goes anywhere from four weeks in the current BFT thinking to two weeks in our current thinking. So all of this is to signal that there are differences and there are important similarities, and that we're going to continue to work in good faith, as we know our bargaining partners are, towards designing a hybrid learning model that will balance a whole complicated set of needs, while maximizing the mitigation practices for all of our students and our staff. So with that, I thank the board and members of the public for the opportunity to give this update, and I welcome questions and discussion.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Stevens. Let's see. Now we'll have comments and questions from board members. Is there anyone who'd like to start us off? Director Miller?
Hi. Thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a comment on student testing and something you said. I agree with the part that we should, if it's not required by the state, we shouldn't let us let the absence of student testing hold us back in extreme standards. But being a student myself and hearing what other students are talking about, I just think we, we need to treat it as much as a necessity as possible. As much as I want to return, and as much as so many of my peers want to return, just imagining going to school in now seeing without seeing how bad COVID rates can get coming out of a quarantine or a holiday period, just like this, the absence of testing just seems more and more scary. So I would, I would just, yeah, just prioritize, please prioritize it as much as possible for students.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments, and I'm hoping I'm not being too subtle in our own commitment to designing a student testing program as well. We have been actively vetting potential testing partners for student testing now for several months. I think we've talked now with six companies. We think we've found one now just late in December that has a number of important supports that will make student testing possible. And so I do hope that we'll be bringing a contract to the board for our next meeting, that will actually sort of signal definitively our partner for student testing, so that we can stand up a student testing program. The difference in thinking is really about whether or not it should be a precondition for reopening schools, or whether or not we sort of add it in as an additional mitigation strategy on top of every everything else we're doing.
Director Vasudev?
Thank you, Superintendent. And I know that you've been working really hard even during the break and, you know, with all these new announcements from the governor's office. So thank you so much for providing the summary and for working so hard during your time off.
My And I'll offer that thanks to all of my staff colleagues as well. Hard at it. Yeah.
Absolutely, to all our staff. My question is also about student testing, and I agree with Director Miller that it's really important. And right now, I know that the district is still, as you alluded to, figuring out the legalities around this issue, right? And it's very complex. Some districts are being asked to do things that we've never done before. And right now, it's testing. Later, it could be vaccinations. This is going to get more complex, and there's lots of legal implications as we go along this process. My question is, could you talk a little bit about the vendor that you said in one of your slides, that the district has identified a testing partner? And specifically, if this partner can provide testing for uninsured and undocumented students?
Appreciate that question. So this has been one of the criteria that we've set for selecting a test vendor to partner with BUSD on student testing. We understand that our families are in a variety of circumstances. Many of our families have insurance. Some of our families are uninsured, and some of our families are undocumented. So we've been careful in vetting each of these potential partners to go through the funding mechanism, paying for the tests for each of these three categories of our families. We're feeling convinced at this point in our vetting of this one particular company, that they have a mechanism for processing reimbursements for families who have insurance, for billing the state in the event that a student does not have insurance, and the state has made available a fund to pay for uninsured families, and as well to work out the details of handling families who are undocumented altogether, so that we have all of our families covered, and that we can provide a seamless student testing experience, independent of the circumstances of a particular family.
That's great. And so my only request would be, Dr. Stevens, that before that contract comes, you know, to the board, that we have just more information about how that will be a seamless experience for our most vulnerable families. Because I think, you know, all of our families need to have options, and all our families should be able to afford this very important resource. So I want to make sure that that information accompanies the the official contract when it comes before the board.
Appreciate the concern. We'll be sure to do that.
Director Sinan?
Thank you for the presentation and the ever-changing quantity of information that comes out. A couple things, just in reminding folks that as we're looking at the tiers, and I think some of us have talked about this earlier, that we're not just looking at the cases of rates per 100,000 right now, but we're looking at availability of ICU hospital beds. And due to the low rate of availability in our Bay Area region, which is under 6% of available ICU, that that is another factor that is impeding our ability to move forward on your on your your radiant, you know, your gradient graph. I'm curious, and Dr. Stevens, we've talked about this a little bit, and and we all talk about using science and using data on driving our decision-making. And I appreciate the governor's effort to put together a school reopening team led by UCSF. I think we have the benefit of having UCSF across the bay right here, as well as a lot of other experts in our community that had been looking at research. And when you look at the CDC data, and you look at the CDC guidelines, while I agree it would be good to get as much student testing as possible moving forward, it's not one of the recommended factors in reopening schools. Much more prioritized by the CDC is mask wearing, social distancing, hand washing, all the things we've been talking about. But I know that there's a lot of momentum and importance that we as a community have put on testing, so that we can get a sense of what the rates are. So what and where the data does show student testing is really important, Director Miller, is for our older youth, our high school youth. So if you've got limited testing ability, the research says test your high schoolers, then your middle schoolers, then your elementary age kids. So again, I'm not saying we shouldn't do student testing, but I am saying if we're limited, that we use that we do use the research and the science that shows us, you know, how do we best deploy the resources that we have? I'd like to suggest that we, I know that you were on a town hall meeting, Dr. Stevens, with the city a couple of, I've lost track of time, a couple of weeks ago?
Yes. In December.
I would like to suggest that we reach out to our city partners and consider doing a joint town hall meeting with experts, maybe led by our own public health officer, maybe bringing over the UCSF faculty who are kind of nationally at the cutting edge of the research around this, so that we could actually have a panel discussion. We could promote it to ourselves, our labor partners, our families, so that there's kind of a more, instead of dueling research papers, or I don't know about you guys, but I see, you know, probably three articles a day that flip flop from one position to another. It might be really valuable to jointly sponsor a panel of experts to talk about COVID and children and transmission, and also some of the research that's coming out around impacts on brain development, impacts on your physical, you know, health. So I'd like to just throw that out there as a suggestion, and maybe we could reach across to city manager Ridley Williams and the mayor about trying to set something up with with our community.
I'd be really happy to reach out. I do know that the city health officer, Dr. Lisa Hernandez, appears every third week at the mayor's weekly town hall. That might be an opportunity just to expand the panel and provide a little bit more of that detailed health-related information that I know a lot of families want. So I'd be happy to reach out. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. And what I'd like to do, I mean, the mayor usually has a whole list of things he's covering. Yeah, and what I'd like to do, I mean, the mayor usually has a whole list of things he's covering on these calls. I'd like to do something that's really focused on you. I listened to the mayor's call. Monday, you know, and there was a chunk of the questions were all about B U S D and what were we going to do and what was the impact? And so I know that you were on it. I don't think we had really enough time to promote it. But I'm really more thinking about the research and the experts and getting some of that dialogue. That and what I like about the way the mayor's town hall is, is he just opens it up for questions and it becomes a very fluid dialogue. Between the people who are listening in and the people who are presenting on the panels. Thanks.
Other, other comments? Questions for Dr. Stevens, Director Babbitt.
I just want to say thank you for that presentation and for the transparency provided to, to all of us and especially the community regarding. The differences in where we are with our labor partner, partner agreements. And then ask, what is the timeline for these negotiations as you foresee it to be completed? So that if it is possible for us to go back, that, you know, this portion will be, will be wrapped up. And then also just want to say I definitely agree with Director Sinai that. Education would be hugely important for the entire community, but if we could do it specifically during duty day or staff time. Maybe as a part of professional development so that our labor partners really get the same information that we have been. Feeded, which makes us want to actually support the possibility of cohort learning in person.
Great questions. It's hard for me to anticipate how much time it will take to get to agreement. We do have a really ambitious bargaining schedule laid out. That was true about December. It's true about January. It includes, you know, bargaining the details both of four different levels, pre-K all the way up to high school. And then we're engaged simultaneously with all four of our labor partners. So we, you know, are moving as quickly as we can. I hope. That we will be ready by the time we get permission. You could see in that modified timeline. That I think most optimistically at this point, that permission might come by mid-February. And I still think that that's a realistic target for us to have these agreements in hand so that we will be prepared at the point that that permission is re-granted. And then in terms, I love the idea of having some way to make that, that sort of town hall information available to our educators. I do hold all staff meetings occasionally and try to make. Information available to our staff and I, we could certainly record a session like that to make it available to our educators. Or even potentially host something specifically for our educators.
Other, other comments? Questions? No, I'm only stalling because I thought, we thought we had done a good job with this agenda of moving up the public hearing. That we have to do it to eight thirty. But we can't start it before eight thirty. So if there's no more, go ahead, Director Brown, Vice President.
I was gonna, I was gonna make a suggestion, President Alper, if we could maybe take a break and then come back to resume the hearing at eight thirty.
Yeah, so if there are no more questions, then we'll, we'll leave the Zoom on. People can turn their, their cameras off. And we will take a recess. We'll start at eight thirty. The hearing won't take long. But we'll start at eight thirty. Does that sound good, Dr. Stevens?
Yeah, that's great. That works.
We'll start exactly at eight thirty. See you then. All right. Welcome back, everybody. Waiting till my phone says eight thirty.
My phone says eight twenty-nine.
Yep. Okay. It's eight thirty. I'm going to open the public hearing for the approval of resolution twenty oh two one. And ask whether there's any public comment on this matter before I ask if there's a motion from the board. I'm going to guess that Mr. Lamaterie Brunel is not. Raising his hand to speak on this, for this public hearing. And he took his hand down. Okay, seeing no other speakers, I'm going to. I'm going to assume also that Sarah Bowles is also not here to speak on this issue. If you're, if you want to speak in our later public comment period, don't raise your hand now. This is for whether you want to speak about. The energy service contract with Schneider Electric. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll move it.
Wish my director Sinai, is there a second?
I second.
Second, my director Vassidov. Any comment or questions? Okay, Ms. Chires, can you please take the role?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Sinai, yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Now raise your hand if you would like to, Director Kalis, we're good?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Raise your hand, please, if you'd like to speak in. Extended public comment. For two minutes. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand now. Because once we start. That will be the last opportunity. Sarah Bowles, raised her hand before. So, okay, there she goes. All right. We're going to start the public comment now. We have three public commenters. Mr. Lamateri Brunel, Ms. Falarka and Ms. Bowles. Mr. Lamateri Brunel, you have two minutes.
Thank you and hello, everybody again. Again, I'm a Berkeley teacher. I'm the Herick Hospital teacher and I also have been working with. Students and families in the assisted homeschool program. And I also work in a few other programs in the district. So I just wanted to speak to the, the discrepancy between the district position and the union position about the rate of community spread. That needs to be reached before any further in-person programs. And so the data that, that the president of BFT was referencing, you know, shows very clearly that if you reopen before you get down to five. Per, per one hundred thousand per day that. That spread in the community will go up. You know, that data is pretty strong. Now, we actually need to do better than that because we need to not just be maintaining the community spread. We need to drive it down to zero, right? We need to end the pandemic. There's many ways that can be done, but you know, our government has not done that. We have a new opportunity coming soon to, to get this new administration to do that. And so. I, I just don't know why we would do, we would consider reopening in a way that would expand community spread. And keep in mind that the zip codes in Berkeley are experiencing very different levels of community spread. You know, in terms of equity, it's West Berkeley has a 10 times higher level of community spread. I've been watching this again and again, over and over. I have families who live in West Berkeley. I have families who live in the hills. And they, their communities are experiencing very different levels of community spread. So any reopening is going to hit. Particular communities super hard if the spread goes up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Falarka. You have two minutes. Ms. Chires? There she is. Go ahead, Ms. Flaca.
Thank you. Yvette Falarka, teacher at Martin Luther King Middle School. On the BFT executive board and I'm speaking on behalf of the equal opportunity now by any means necessary on BAM caucus. First, I just want to say that BAM unequivocally condemns. The attempt by Trump and his supporters to carry out an unsuccessful coup. By invading the Capitol earlier today. It is absolutely clear and incumbent. That whatever the outcome of the election. We are going to need to continue to be vigilant and also to mobilize. To make sure that we stop any further attacks by him or his movement. And BAM is calling for a mass car caravan tomorrow. At four o'clock, starting in downtown Oakland to defend democracy from Trump and his right wing and fascist supporters. With that, then it is extremely important and it's very clear. That the outcome of any and every policy. By any government officials is incredibly. Important and has major implications for life and death. And we have not fought as hard as we have as a movement to get rid of Trump. To simply have then Democrats carry out similar policies as him. Governor Newsom's proposal to try to open schools early in February is just. Crazy. It's obscene. And it completely ignores the reality of what people are going through right now. Right now, every one of us knows somebody. Who's gotten COVID, who's died from COVID, who's almost died from COVID. And the school board should be spending its time making clear that you are doing everything possible. To save and protect the health and the lives of our students, educators and families.
Thank you, Ms. Flaca. Last speaker tonight will be Sarah Bowles, Ms. Bowles.
Hey, I just want to comment on the BFT and BUSD negotiations. To say that student medical testing is a condition for access to education is a significant overreach. And more importantly, the CDC's website says it's illegal. So I'm not clear why this is even being considered. So I'm going to quote from the CDC's website for the benefit of the, the community. And it says, if a school is implementing a testing strategy. Testing should be offered on a voluntary basis. It is unethical and illegal to test someone who does not want to be tested. Including students whose parents or guardians do not want them to be tested. So, I mean, obviously no parent wants their kid to get, have COVID. I, I just want to emphasize the UCSF's director of COVID response says that masks and social distancing are equivalent to vaccines. If we go back to school in those conditions, we will be keeping each other safe. So I, I'm not sure why we're contemplating a massively expensive. And also kind of like operationally tricky. Operation here that the CDC says, you know, you can't actually even mandate. I, I think that needs to be removed from the negotiations. Because your lawyer is probably going to just echo the CDC. So I really hope that BFT and BUSD can. Focus your negotiations on more practical considerations that you can actually. You know. Really truly implement in the school setting.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. That concludes our public comment period and our meeting. So we will adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
A couple of weeks. Take care.